Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 27th meeting of the Charles County Board of Education. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our.
Mr. Schwartz, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
We have one person signed up for public forum. I will read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond nor in the forum to statements made by speakers. When appropriate, C C P S staff may address the speaker's concerns directly. Statements should relate to Charles County Board of Education agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations. Personnel matters, pending or potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. The speaker this evening is Sam Wendell.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam, full preferred name Sphinx. I am here today-
Is there Matt?
Hello, my name is Sam, full preferred name Sphinx. I am here today to speak up about the discrimination that trans people have faced in schools and prejudice that I myself have faced. During my time as an out transgender woman, I have been called slurs, hateful name, received death threats, and damaging rumors have been spread about me, all on the basis of me just being trans. I seek equality and the representation of trans people in the classroom, but first we had to clear the stigma of trans people and teach others how we identify as a no joke. If we were to teach people about trans people in different ways, we can eliminate said stigma, and not only will this help the trans community, it will help our future gener- excuse me, our future generations to be more open-minded and when people act out on exclusionary behaviors towards trans people and dehumanize them, it teaches a mindset that trans community members are filled with disgusting insides, but it's simply not true. We just seek to be ourselves, and we seek to just want to be comfortable in our skin. And every day in school, we can't handle dealing with all this hate every day we go through. I can't handle being in a classroom anymore. It gets so stressful to the point because all people see me as is a joke. I just want to be able to be me and learn, but I can't do that without people stripping me down to my bone, all on the basis of my gender identity. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, for coming out tonight. Yeah, um, thank you again, and if you'd like to leave a copy of what you presented with someone, or you can email it, that way we'll make sure everyone has it, and someone may follow up with you. And in the future, the board may have town halls, which are a little less formal and can allow for direct interaction between the board and the public. Thank you again. We're going to continue now with the agenda, and first up is a revision to the budget. And there is Ms. Acton.
Here we are once again.
Good evening.
Sherry's going to pull up the budget planning model, which will show you the items that have been changed since our last meeting on the 14th. So unbeknownst to any of us, the state released new state aid on February the 17th. So right after we approved our budget, they gave us new numbers. And it was based on a change that the Controller's Office had released new data on the net taxable income for all of the counties, which changed the wealth calculation and resulted in an increase to our state aid of $7.7 million. This allowed us to increase the teachers' pension funding and the nurses' contract by $500,000 each, based on additional information that we have on those budgeted items. It also allowed us to increase maintenance materials of instruction, sorry about that, due to inflation and higher costs. We had not made a change in materials of instruction, and from 2019 to 2023, it had only increased by 2.34%, so we did increase it by 152,000. It also allowed us to provide funding for extended learning opportunities that need to continue, although the grant funding is running out. We've talked about the cliff that's coming, so this allowed us to put in the budget placeholders on those extended learning opportunities, wages, supplies, and transportation, so that we can continue those once the grant is over. So what that also does is it allows us to reduce our ask of the county by $3.1 million, which is still an increase over this year of 6 million, and also is it's an ask of 10 million above M O E. So those are the changes that we made, and our new budgeted amount is 480,771,290 that we're asking for. So the budget is due to the county tomorrow, and that's why we're here today, to ask for review and approval of this budget.
All right.
Any questions?
Any comments or questions from board members? Ms. Creamer?
Thank you, Chairperson Lucas. Thank you, Ms. Acton, for coming back again. We appreciate that. I just would like to get a little more clarification on what the materials for instruction would include, just both from my knowledge and for the public, to understand what we're asking for and what hasn't been increased since 2019.
So Sherry might have to jump in on this, but on materials of instruction, it's certain categories that are budgeted for the schools, and then we take it and it's divvied up based on enrollment. So the way our budget is prepared, as we've talked about, is we start with what was budgeted the previous year, and unless we ask for an increase, there's no additional dollars to allocate to any line item, and materials of instruction is like that as well. So since we know that inflation has risen and, you know, costs for supplies are increased as we had this opportunity, we thought we should increase materials of instruction. And do you recall all the items off the top of your head that are in that line item?
Um, so that's basically, it's the M O I line, which is allows them to buy kind of pretty much all the type of supplies that they would need, but it is, again, like we said last month, based on their enrollment. So if you've got a higher enrollment, your per pupil number will get you more funding than a school that has a lower enrollment, but it allows each school to be on the same playing field because it's all based on your enrollment. So this $152,000 is basically an influx into that pool that we use to allocate back out to the schools.
Just a follow-up to that. So do you know, on average, in dollars or percentage, that each school may see as an increase per pupil?
Um, I don't.
We have to re-figure the calculation, so it's hard to say.
But we increased-
We haven't gone that far yet.
It was a double-digit increase to the pool of funding, though.
A double-digit increase? Okay.
To the pool of funding.
Double-digit in terms of percentage increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Ms. Morley?
Hi, thank you all again. It's always great to have good news, and to have more money than expected. Hopefully, this trend will continue. Can you talk to me a little bit about the extended learning and how that would be affected? I know that's typically tutoring and summer school, is that right? Is it too early to say what that may look like, or do we have an idea?
So I can take that question, Ms. Morley. So as you know, the federal dollars that we got through support for the pandemic were able to sometimes even quadruple our slots for summer programs. And so it expanded our summer boost program, it expanded our middle school programs, and we actually started providing transportation for students, because many times, if you don't provide transportation, then, you know, some of the students that you want to attend will not. So when we got this pleasant surprise, and Karen would not allow me to do anything until she had done five calculations over and ever to make sure it was true, one of the things that we had concerns about, and we would have had to handle in the next budget cycle, is how were we going to handle the cliff? So it's in-school tutoring, additional staff support for that, it's after-school tutoring programs, extended learning opportunities after school, it's summer learning opportunities, and it is, the way we calculated, a little over 3 million. It's the staffing cost, the material cost, and then the transportation cost, and I think we might have snuck in potentially some buffers for meals, because, as you know, there were some changes, but we'll for the meals requirement, and so we try to do a comprehensive view of just adding it to our core-based budget, so that once the federal funding, which we will be running out of this year, goes away, we will actually be able to continue at the same pace of support for students.
May I ask a follow-up question? Will this be for K through 12?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yes, I'm glad to hear about the increase for the supply, so I want to ask this additional question. Would that flow over to the teachers, to their supplies also?
Yes.
Yes, because it is, so a school will have X number of dollars allocated to them, and it is available through the principal, you know, whatever staff member needs, whatever they need for their classroom, this is that pot of money that they would be able to pull from.
And we, Mr. Lowndes and Dr. Jones and Sherry and I have met, and once the allocation is given to the principals, the principals are going to be asked to submit a plan to teaching and learning and the chief of schools saying how they're going to distribute it, and then they have the, Mr. Lowndes and Dr. Jones have the opportunity to weigh in on those plans, so that we can see that it is as equitable as it can be.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Where does professional development fall into all of this? Does that part of instruction at all, or how does that, are there funds allocated for teacher professional development?
Not in this materials, no, and not in the E L O, unless, no, I don't think there's any P D rolled into the E L O.
So we do a little bit of P D just for the training for the summer programs embedded into that, but the bulk of our professional development funding comes from a couple of different places throughout the budget. We have the federal grants, so federal Title II has a component that's heavy in professional development, actually, all the federal grants, Title I, the I D A, and the remaining federal grants can be used for professional development. And I think in the original budget breakdown, we actually have a, I don't know if I'm saying the right line item, Sherry, so I'm staring at you. The category that is professional learning, there is a, there is a subject called professional learning that I think you can see where all of the various fundings come forward.
So we have a specific program for staff development-
Yes.
-where there's within the operating budget, and that entire program is basically allocated for P D, that teachers, is mainly for certificated staff for training.
And one of the requests that we have from Office of Human Resources, which is part of the budget, is an increase of 18,500 for professional development and substitute professional development, but there is, as Sherry said, there is a program for staff development.
Okay, and this may or may not be a question for Mr. Lowndes, and I may be ahead of myself because I'm thinking a little bit further ahead, but so are the funds allocated for each subject matter, say, for instance, health education? Do health education teachers have a certain, is there a certain budget for professional development specifically for, you know, each subject matter kind of thing?
So what we do is we ask everyone to contribute-
Mr. Lowndes, can you come for the mic? Because we gotta, we have to keep it on the record.
Thank you.
So what we do is we look at what new curriculum is going to be implemented during the school year, and then we do earmark within that professional development budget enough money to provide the professional learning that our teachers are going to need during that time. So when we were rolling out the illustrious path, and we were rolling out into reading in the elementary, one of the things that we did was not only did we make sure there was enough money for the curriculum, but we made sure there was enough money to train all our teachers within the curriculum. So we're going to be doing the same thing with health for next year, because we know we have some new areas that we have to cover based on COMAR within our health curriculum, and we know we're going to have to train teachers. So we have put money aside to train teachers next year within that health curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Morley?
One other question about the request, the 10 million above maintenance of effort. Can you help me understand, for some reason, God forbid, we don't get that? What does that then look like?
So-
Maybe it's not going to be back in front of us with the revised budget.
I guarantee I'll be back no matter what, but yes, that'll be a bigger conversation. So what we would have to do, if they only give us maintenance of effort and don't give us anything in addition, we would have to, the superintendent and senior leadership would have to take a look at the budget requests and prioritize what stays in and what goes out, and it would just depend on how much they gave us.
But it would come back to you as a recommended budget?
Yes.
So you still have to go through the process of saying yea or nay to my recommendation.
And if that were to happen, we would have a similar format where we would tell you, this is what you previously approved, and this is now where we are.
Normally, it comes back. Last year was a good anomaly, in that it was good, exactly. I did, I just had one question, not so much in what you presented, but so you mentioned that there was a change in the net taxable income, so that, I think all of us were kind of shocked that we were actually getting more money, you know?
That's true.
Given everything we've heard recently, and we all-
So when you look at those numbers, though, although our net taxable income increased, the rest of Maryland increased as well, so it's where we come in, you know, where we play, and it's also per pupil wealth. So even though we've increased, we also have increased enrollment.
Sure.
So what has to happen is that our wealth per pupil has to be 80% of what the state average is, or we get additional funding. And so that's what happened, is our wealth per pupil is not at 80%, hence the increase.
That's the metric, okay.
I have one more question.
Yes, Ms. Warren?
Yeah, so you mentioned, I heard you talk about an increase with nursing, I believe, nursing salaries. Did you mention anything about special education, and is that the same funding, or is that federal?
No, it was pension, retirement for teachers.
Okay.
And also the nurses' contract. There were raises that were given, approved by the state, and we, you know, as you know, we get our nurses from the health department, so they notified us of the additional increases that we did not figure in our first or second go-round, so we put additional funding in there to compensate for that.
Okay, so how does that work with this funding for special education? Do they have their, is there, you said something about earlier about per pupil? Are there separate funds allocated for special education? Because I know there's more needs.
There is a state aid category for special education, where we get funding for-
And the teachers as well? They get extra funding?
Yes.
Okay.
They do.
Right, yes.
I just have one question. I know we're talking about education, but does any of this funding have anything involved with security, as far as, you know, the kids being protected, what's going on now?
Our original request, which is still in this, is for, how many?
Seven.
Seven, right?
Seven, youth engagement personnel to be at the high school level to improve the security. So that's still in this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we're going to take a vote on this at the end of the meeting tonight. Next is Mr. Heim, I believe. He's going to talk to us about our next elementary school.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I'm here to present information on the contract bids for construction of Elementary 23. Elementary 23 is set to open in the fall of 2025, will have a state rate of capacity of approximately 778 students, and will have a total square footage of around 94,000 square feet. Elementary 23 will be located in the Highlands neighborhood off St. Charles Parkway, the southbound side, as part of the villages of Witted Glen. The school lot was given to C C P S as part of the Docket 90 agreement. C C P S is also set to receive two other school sites within the villages of Witted Glen and Piney Reach. State planning approval was granted in F Y 21. C C P S received local approval for design funding in F Y 21 C I P. The first allotment of construction funding was received in the F Y 23 C I P, and as a reminder, that cost share is 65% state, 35% local for construction of the facility. Competitive bids for construction were solicited. The bids were opened on January 27, 2023. Five general contractors were pre-approved for bidding, while four general contractors submitted bids. The low bidder is Keller Brothers Incorporated with a base bid of $44,912,800. The low bid with bid alternatives is also Keller Brothers at $45,451,000. C C P S is seeking board approval for the Keller Brothers Incorporated bid, including selected bid alternates, at $45,451,000. So at this point, I will entertain any questions, and then later I'll just go up for a vote as an action item. And we are pleased to announce that that is within our projected budget, so we're not having to go back to the state or county like we had to do with the renovation of T C Elementary School and seek additional funding. So we are excited to be within our projected budget.
That is good news. So I know this is, you know, obviously the first time most of the board has heard something like this, so if there are any questions, Ms. Morley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heim. Can you please explain the waivers for percentage of M B E and also the M B E subgoals? That was a little alarming.
Okay, so there are several things that contractors have to submit as part of the preapproval, and then after the bids have been submitted for verification of the bids that were actually submitted. So there's a percentage that's set by the state for minority business participation, and that's between 15 to 21%. So if any of the bidders do not reach that participation level, then they have to submit a waiver for acceptance of that bid.
So it seems then they all had to request waivers then? Is that typical? Because it's quite a ways off from, you know, for all of the bids candidly.
Sure.
Yeah.
It can depend upon when the bids are actually submitted, what's happening with the economy, and who actually then also submits bids to those general contractors, and sometimes all has to do with where those general bidders are located, because typically they'll have the bidders within subcontractors are usually placing bids within that overall contract, who are, you know, either nearby that general contractor or nearby the school system. And they also have to be prevailing wages, union wages.
Yeah, just if I could comment, you know, historically, as Mr. Heim said, it's more of a function of what else is going on in the economy, and the prime contractor, you know, as you said, the construction isn't set to start for a while, but if there's a lot of other construction going on, as there, I mean, it's slowed down now, but last year, as everyone knows, I mean, home building was just out of control, and so those tend to be a little more favorable for a lot of folks, and so the fact that this came in under our projected cost is actually good news. Ms. Warren, did you have a question?
No, no, no. See, I get it. How many bidders did y'all have?
We had four general contractors that actually submitted bids. We had five that were pre-approved to submit bids.
Okay.
And we've done work with three of the four previously. Keller Brothers has been involved in a number of our projects recently. Shible, who was not successful, has been involved in a number of our projects. Hess has been involved in previous construction projects with us. So the new bidder that we've not done any work with was Henley Construction, so we've not done any projects with them recently. But the other three had previously submitted bids and had done major projects with C C P S.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yes, could we know the prices of the other bidders?
The what?
What was the, yeah.
The prices, yes. I'll start with Henley Construction. Their base bid was $51,300,000, and their bid with the bid alternatives was $51,947,000. That was the highest bid. The next highest bid was Hess Construction. Their base bid was $47,576,000. Their base bid with the bid alternates was $48,179,000. And the next lowest bidder was Shible Construction with a base bid of $45,995,000, and their base bid with bid alternatives was $46,544,000. So it was roughly about a million less, the lowest bid, for the next highest bidder.
So the one you did, the one that won, you have already done business with before?
We have. So they're actually involved in a number of current projects. Keller Brothers is finishing up the renovation and expansion of Starrett Middle School. They were involved in the, which was completed several years ago, several years ago, the kindergarten addition at James Craig Elementary School, and they also completed a project for us this past summer, the Brown Elementary School Open Space Enclosure.
Okay, and they based out of?
They're based out of Montgomery County.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So that's one of the issues that we experienced. The closest general contractor who placed a bid is Shible, and they're based out of Calvert County. So we don't have very many general contractors who take on large projects such as a new school construction or a major renovation in Charles County. We have some contractors who will do smaller projects. They'll do kindergarten additions and some small, like, open space enclosure projects, but we typically don't have a general contractor in the county submit to something, or submit a bid for a complete construction project or a major renovation. And that can, as Mr. Lucas was saying, can affect the bids and then the prices that come in.
Right.
Because when you're bringing, especially with the subcontractors, the further they're traveling, that will increase the cost of construction.
Yeah, that's why I asked, because I think if it was in the county, it would probably be less, so that's why I asked the question of all the people who competed.
Yes.
All right.
Good question.
Ms. Creamer?
Thank you, Mr. Heim. So just a quick question, just for clarification. So you picked the lowest bid, correct? Is that typically what you would do? And if not, what are some of the factors that are considered when you're deciding who to go with?
So we would accept the low bid, and that's why we go through that bid process now. We could disqualify a low bidder because they're not meeting, as we go through the vetting process after the bid's been submitted, not meeting certain requirements. So we had had situations in the past where the low bid was not accepted based upon extenuating circumstances.
And you don't expect that, I assume, to be an issue with this company because we've used them before?
We don't anticipate this being an issue now.
Okay.
And then the last, the final step will be the I A C, the Interagency Commission on Public School Construction, will in March accept, if the board approves the contract this evening, then in March, the I A C would vote for the final approval of the contract.
Okay, just one follow-up question. So typically with construction projects, and I'm assuming with schools, it's no different, the bid amount doesn't end up being the net amount that we pay, because things tend to happen where additions are made to the budget and things like that.
Sure, so we have what we call a contingency line with large projects, which allows for change orders, and change orders will happen during the course of construction.
Okay, and how much is that, is allocated for change orders?
We can, so that's why we also include the bid alternates, so we usually have a contingency line around a million, depending upon the size of the overall project, so if it's a new school construction, somewhere in between a million, a million and a half in contingency in the budget.
Okay, great, thank you for answering. Okay, great. Thank you for answering.
Just to be clear, that whatever that amount is, that is part of someone's bid?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's already built into the bid?
Right. And even once the project is complete, we withhold a certain percentage of final payment until punchless items and things are completed with the overall project. So even though the students and staff may be occupying that building, we submit final payment until all punchless items are completed.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Warren and then Ms. Morley.
How exactly are your bids distributed or?
Announced?
Correct. Thank you. Advertised.
They're advertised through our procurement office. So they're advertised around the states. They use various media platforms to put that out. So contractors are well aware of the bidding process and are constantly looking at only our procurement page, but also things that are posted around the state.
Right. So because I'm familiar with like one state page, but there are others, you're saying there are other, like, specific to contractors?
Yes.
Specific platforms. So how many contractors do typically apply?
We were pleased to have five contractors get preapproved for this. As I mentioned, with TC Martin, which we are now in the process of that renovation, we only had two contractors that were preapproved and two contractors that submitted bids. So, you know, concern is when you have less contractors submitting bids, that that could potentially lead to higher prices, because obviously there's less competition.
Right, okay.
Thanks, Ms. Morley.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Can you tell us, you said that we've worked with Keller before in Stoddard, Craig, Brown. What has the history been like? Have they complete projects on time? Has there been any concerns with their work? Is there any reason, you know, cause for concern?
We have no, based upon our recent experience, we have no concerns with the way they manage projects or completions of, you know, with timelines. With any large construction projects, you're going to have obstacles along the way. With new school construction, you're going to have issues with weather, because you're dealing with, you know, outside elements until you get that the building under roof. So there are things that any general contractor are going to experience that are sometimes beyond their control, such as issues with weather. Obviously, recently with the economy and with COVID and the shutdown with factories and things, some of our construction projects have experienced issues with supply chain issues and shortages of materials. And of course, you know, also related to COVID, contractors have experienced issues with, you know, a shrinking labor force. So there's things that are beyond their, sometimes either beyond their control. But regardless of all those things, you know, taken into consideration with our current projects, Brown Elementary School, our staff was back in that building, moving things back in in July and August, and they started off, you know, the school year in that, you know, that newly renovated space with the open space enclosure. With Stoddard, you know, we've had some hiccups along the way, again, related to weather, supply chain issues. Stoddard is a difficult project because it's an occupied renovation. So unlike with some of our most recent renovation projects with TC Martin, which is currently in the transition school, and been prior to TC Martin Brown occupied the transition school, and before that Turner and Mud, we had the fortunate ability to move those schools, the students and staff, out of those buildings while they were renovated. We didn't have that option with Stoddard based upon its location and the number of students there. Transition school was not an option based upon how many kids it started. So that was, that's a difficult construction when you have an occupied building. We were somewhat fortunate, though. You know, I thought you want to look at anything positive coming out of COVID and our school closures, but there was a period of time where there was very few staff in that building and those students, which did help, you know, Keller Brothers upkeep with, you know, with their construction timeline. But, you know, I guess, long story short, we don't have any concerns with any, anything on their part with any recent projects.
Two other quick questions. Did you mention that you believe that there may be opportunities for minority subcontractors within this contract? Is that something that Keller has presented? Or are you saying that that's what generally happens?
So they, you know, as part of submitting their bid, they've already arranged who their subcontractors are with this project.
Okay.
So what they're doing now and what the other three would have been doing also is submitting their waiver for, you know, why they were not able to meet the MBE participation.
Okay, so there'll be some, but not full. And finally, can you explain why alternate number seven for Keller, that was the only one, the 77,500? Why was that so different than the others and so much?
So alternate seven is delete the exterior learning terraces. So the best example would be if you've visited Billensley Elementary School. It's a two-story facility. Off of their science classroom, not from the hallway, but from within the science classroom, there's a door that goes out to an outside terrace. So that's an outside classroom area that they have. But they also, Billensley has two outside classroom areas. What we're doing is we're deleting that from this project. And if you go and you'll see bid alternates five and six, it's providing outdoor classroom areas for Elementary 23. Our safety and risk management had a little bit of concerns with, since it's an open area, even though there are railings on that area, there were some initial concerns about safety with the outside classroom of Billensley being located on the second floor. So we have looked at that with Elementary 23, and we'd like to not have that area at Elementary 23. Instead, utilize the outside classroom areas. And also, that would make it more open and available for other classrooms to use as well, because as I mentioned with Billensley, the only access point is through the science classroom.
I'm sorry, one final thing. Will these all be classrooms? Will there be any use of, what are the things called, pods or?
There are, so there are some.
No, don't say pod. Do not say pod.
There are collaborative areas. So you'll notice in alternate number four is to provide some additional acoustic panels in the collaborative learning areas. So we typically see, and they do kind of talk pods, where we kind of group the grade levels together. So you typically see a collaborative area outside in the hallway for those grade level sections.
Ms. Kramer?
I just have another additional question. So in addition to these alternates, which I see some of them are enhancements to some of the older school buildings, can you speak a little bit about what the students can expect to enjoy that will be sort of new and, you know, something different than the older existing school buildings? Like something that's new that's coming along with this construction that, you know, might, that they might like to know?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, when we build a new building, we want it to be shiny and have all the latest bells and whistles, but we also want to make sure that we're keeping equity concerns in mind. So in terms of, you know, technology, you typically see the same levels of technology in a new school as you would see in, you know, in older school. What, you know, as we just talked about the collaborative areas, that's something that you see in some of our newer schools, you know, with Billensley and a little bit with Mud Elementary School with the renovation there, and a few areas with Eva Turner. But with Elementary 23, you would see, you know, some more collaborative areas than you would see in typically a facility that was built in the 1970s or 80s. You're going to, you know, typically, some of the things you're going to see that older schools don't see, you're going to see things that are going to lead us to getting our, at least our lead, silver for lead. So it's going to be more energy efficient building. So some of the things, you know, that are more beneficial to this building compared to older building aren't always apparent to, you know, to the students and to the staff. But it's definitely got to be, you know, a more energy efficient building. It's going to have a geothermal system, just like we have at Billensley and Mud and St. Charles High School. You know, with the lighting, you're going to see, you know, sensors with the lighting. So, you know, when the classroom is not occupied, you know, the lights go off in classrooms and in hallways, again, you know, being more energy efficient. But, you know, once you're inside a classroom, a classroom is a classroom, and it's, you know, it's what the teacher does in there. And, you know, it's manipulatives that they use. And, you know, and again, going back to technology, we typically have the same, you know, one-on-one devices that students who are, you know, at Higden or, you know, Mount Hope, two of our older elementary schools compared to, you know, Billensley or Mud, or in this case, Elementary 23 when it's built. So a lot of the things that are, you know, that make this building different than some of the older buildings are always apparent to the eye.
Thank you. That's helpful, because I think that it's still really good to know that our tax dollars are going to making our buildings more energy efficient, more environmentally friendly. And those are things, you know, personally as a taxpayer, that I like to hear, even if it's not visibly apparent to the eye. So thank you for that.
I mean, the buildings are going to be much lighter just through the type of lighting that is used, but also with the classrooms, you're going to try to, you know, use as much natural light as well. So you're typically going to see more windows in those classrooms compared to some of our older, older buildings.
That's great news. Thank you.
Ms. Butler, Washington?
Well, that's great. Are we concerned also going green? Because I know it's a lot of taxpayer money out there for going green in our schools and stuff.
So as I just mentioned, we have a geothermal system there. So that is going green. And it actually is a higher cost than if we were just using a, you know, gas-fired boiler or if we were using, you know, an oil-fired boiler.
Okay. Well, when I say going green, I'm talking about how we consider like the roof, like doing the green for the roofing and?
We are not doing a green roof. We only have one school in the school system, and it's not the entire roof. It's just partial roof. But St. Charles High School has part of that roof is green. We are not doing anything solar with Elementary 23 at this time. We did look at that with our last elementary school that was built, Billensley 23, and that was actually part of the original plan. And we had a contract with, at the time, was SolarCity, which then was bought out by Tesla. So we actually had the infrastructure in place, the switchgear that was needed for that. But then that contract fell through with Tesla. But again, being geothermal is being energy efficient and being green. So that is one of the things that the state of Maryland is considering or pushing for school systems consider for heating and cooling their facilities.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Heim.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, and this is from the board and superintendent to discuss. We mentioned before the opportunity for town halls, and we've had these in the past. In fact, we had them somewhat regularly, and then, of course, COVID came, and we stopped. So I take it without even asking that that's something that the board would like to see. So I think we can have the superintendent or staff put things together. But I think the two questions that come to mind is what day of the week and what time. And I'll entertain any suggestions for that. Ms. Smith?
So, thank you, Chairperson. Before I answer the question, just a clarifying question. When you say town halls, are we talking about like various topical meetings throughout the community? Are we talking about something that's more static? Like, once a month, we hold a town hall on a particular topic in a static location? Can you just clarify what you mean by town hall?
Sure. So don't think it would be once a month, probably once a quarter. But what it is, it's a time for, and we can discuss that, too. In the past, it's just been open to where anyone from the public can come in and ask a question, and we can have dialogue, unlike what we're not able to do in our regular board meetings. So it offers an opportunity to have dialogue, either with staff or with board members. So now, you know, another question is now that we have districts, if we wanted to have one, whatever the frequency is, to rotate it in districts, and whether we would like to limit the people coming to be from that district, just so we can give everybody as much opportunity as possible. I mean, these are all things that we don't have to answer right now, but we can start the discussion. And then in the past, I'll have to go back and look, but we were doing them once a quarter, at least once every four or five months.
So I think once a quarter is a good starting point. I guess in my mind, when I think of town halls, so I like the idea of being able to engage directly with the public. I think in terms of being able to answer their questions on the spot, I think that offers a bit of complexity, just ensuring that we have the right information, the right people in the room to be able to address the question. I know the superintendent knows all things. But of course, she relies on her team as well. So just thinking about how we structure those town halls and whether or not it does make sense for us to have a topical meeting, whether it's once, you know, this quarter, we're going to focus on CTE in the various high schools, and sort of what that looks like, just to ensure parents are informed and aware, or what the high school recruitment process looks like. I'm just throwing out random topics, but.
So we, and then is your thought is then to limit questions from whoever comes to whatever we're presenting? And that way, we can have a cadre of people there that have a good knowledge base?
I'd be open to hearing from my fellow board members. I think it could be a hybrid in terms of we start off with a presentation on, this is what we've come to discuss, and be sure that the public is fully aware of. But then we're going to open it up for general discussion or conversation around different things.
Okay. So we're going to go, Ms. Kramer, and then who else had a question? Ms. Thomas, and then Ms. Abuja. Okay. So, Ms. Kramer, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairperson. And I do, I think a lot of what you said, Ms. Smith, actually makes sense in terms of making sure that we're prepared to answer questions, if that's the main purpose, for it to be a different sort of setup than the board meetings where the public comes out and may have questions or statements, but they can't get them directly addressed. However, I do like more of the idea of a hybrid meeting, because there may be things that they just want to ask kind of off the cusp, that it could be something that we could address at that time. But just making sure that they're aware that if we don't have the answer for them right then, that then, again, we will follow up with them. But it still gives an opportunity for us to engage a little more, maybe get a little more detail from them as to what they're asking, as opposed to the format that we have with the current monthly board meetings. So I like the idea of having a presentation on maybe a particular topic, but also having a portion of the town hall where it's just open questions, a true town hall. And then if we can't answer the question at that time, we make sure that we get contact information to be able to follow up with them. That would be my preference. As far as date and time, quarterly, I think is a good start. I agree with Ms. Smith. And, I mean, obviously, in the evenings, maybe midweek, obviously not on the same day as our board meetings, maybe a Wednesday evening, just throwing that out there.
Sure.
Maybe we could survey the public and ask, you know, survey the parents and ask them what day of the week or time would be most convenient for them. And then certainly, of course, I think we should have a hybrid option with a virtual option for parents to tune in that can't be in the room.
Well, that, well, we can talk about that. That may be, depending where we have it, that could prove to be challenging.
Or two dates.
Unless you're just going to have them here, because there's, and jump in if I'm speaking out of term, but again, from experience, right? So typically, we did these in, did them in the cafeteria, if I recall.
I like that, though. I like that idea better.
See, if you do that, it's not.
I get it. Logistically, it may not be. So then maybe we have two dates, where we have one that's an in-person and one virtual, or maybe we rotate them. So this quarter, it's in-person. This quarter, it's virtual. I mean, obviously, we're just, you know, kind of brainstorming here at this point, but we definitely have to consider that even if it's within the community, now, we do have a greater opportunity to reach more, more parents, I feel like, and community members if we have it at the schools in the community. But at the same time, there still may be challenges with regard to transportation or timing and things like that.
Sure, sure. And let's go to Ms. Abuja.
I just wanted to add on to something Ms. Smith was saying about like not knowing the questions beforehand. I remember back in November, that's when I hosted the student town hall. So the way I did it was I had the students submit questions beforehand, and then from there, like, pick out the questions. That way, the board members had time to prepare. And then towards the end of the town hall, it was open for students to ask questions off the bat. So I feel that's something we could consider. And then another thing I would also like us to consider is if we do town halls quarterly, I would want to consider the possibility of having one of those town halls be for students only, because I feel like student concerns are very different from the concerns of adults. So I feel like that would give them an opportunity to be more comfortable in voicing their opinions.
Okay. Ms. Thomas? Good, good. Okay, Ms. Morley?
Another question I had, and I'm really liking these suggestions, because that was the first thought I had. How will that be different than public forum? You know, and I like the piece about being able to interact. I know we're going to be limited, to a large extent, on what we can actually say on the spot, even if we have the questions in advance. You may not have the answers at that time. Other consideration is typically the chair speaks for the board, especially on items, you know, well, only on items we've already discussed. How would that be different in that particular setting? Would it be individual board members throwing out questions that may take? board members throwing out questions? That may take a question, it's fielded at them. Would everything go through the chair and the board members are there more so as a supporting role? And how has it happened in the past?
I actually go back and look in the past. So as you said, if it's, if it's something that the board has a position on, I mean, anybody can answer that, but, but the, the chair speaks to that. I think, and this goes back to how it's structured, whether, whether we're getting questions in advance or whether we're going to have a topic and only field questions on that topic. For, I'll just say this point blank, for, for board members to give decidedly different views on an issue, hearing it for the first time, probably isn't going to solve much that evening. So I think we'd have to, to think through that. And again, if it's anything, you know, any suggestion doesn't have to come, I mean, you can send it to the board. It doesn't have to come through a town hall. It doesn't have to come through even at a regular meeting, although those options are, are obviously available. But I think that, that's something that we'd have to have, you know, structured and, and ironed out. I, I guess I'm just trying to understand if you're saying if someone asks a board member a specific thing?
Whether it's directed to an individual board member or if they have a, a question in general and a particular board member we want to answer, that, that'd have to be some kind of coordination because it becomes an official response. So we have to just be mindful of that.
Sure. Well, those are all things we can, we can iron out, obviously, before we have the first one. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. And I'm actually want to follow up on something Amira said. And Amira did host a very well put together student town hall in November. And she had already mentioned, I was going to mention it. I thought it worked real well, how she gave the speakers a chance to submit questions. We had a chance to receive those questions and not only with questions that we could answer, but staff was also prepared to answer a lot more questions. And it, it worked out really well. During the student town hall, we all had an opportunity to interact with the students and answer questions. So I thought that was put together really well. And I think it's, it's a good, would be a good format to us to follow, for us to follow. If you advertise the town hall and make sure that everyone has adequate time, that wants to participate, to be able to submit their questions so that we can be fully prepared to answer them. I also agree with maybe polling the public to see dates and times and which works best for everyone. I, I don't know how the board feels about it, but I, I personally would like to see the town, the town hall is held here, just because this is where we have all, all of our, our staff works here and has all of our resources here. I also would want to run the idea by the board, since we are elected from districts now. What, in years past, we always operated as a board together. Now, would the board want to independently host their own town halls in their own districts? If that's something that would be frowned upon if someone were to do that or not. I'm just asking the question to see what people think about it. And that's, that's my thoughts on it.
So when you say host, you mean only the people from that district?
Well, say I, so I represent District One. Would the board not be comfortable if I were to independently host a, a town hall at the Newburgh Firehouse within my district? And invite you all to attend or invite the chairperson to attend? And that's, prior to this year, there were no districts. So there was not such a thing. But now, it's, it's just something that I wanted to ask the board if that's a route. We wanted to go independently on our, on our own, if, if we wanted to do that, instead of trying to divide up all of us going through, through each district in a year. And then if one topic is different than in one district than it is in the next, is, are people going to be mad if you do that? So, you know?
So let me just, before anybody speaks, let me get my thoughts on that. Because I think, you know, even though you're elected from district, you represent the entire school system. And, and there's, there's a danger, and I don't mean that in, in a bad way, but quite, quite honestly and quite innocently, board members could give decidedly different responses to the same question in, in different meetings. And, and that then becomes very problematic. And so I, I think we need to, to figure out a way to, to reconcile that. So that's my comment to that. Ms. Smith?
So one, thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Ms. Lucas, that's okay.
No, Mr. Hancock, I know.
It's been a long day.
I was going to talk to Mr. Hancock. It most certainly has been a long day. Excuse me. Well, one, thank you for raising the concern or necessarily the, the recommendation of having something within our respective districts. I do like, like the idea of us individually being able to engage with, you know, parents, students, family members kind of within our respective districts. Again, the concerns may look different from district to district, but I do support Chairman Lucas's point in terms of we may all have different responses to different questions. So needing to ensure that there is one uniform voice. But if the town hall in districts one, two, three, four essentially are just to gather information to hear from parents and hear from family members around sort of what are some of the general concerns that they're having or things that they're experiencing, I think that's innocent enough and something we definitely should be doing as representatives. But in terms of providing responses from the board perspective, I think that's where it gets a little tricky.
I think it is. And maybe that, that's a good point in that staff can go to four places. And, and that, and that the board member really, we, we can, you know, if, if it's what the board agrees to, the board member really just remains silent. And, and yeah, and, and, but is hearing all the concerns in that district.
It's information gathering.
That's a good point. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like that. Ms. Warren?
I like that idea of the information gathering from each district because every district is different. Every parent, student, you know, it's just different things going on. Also, to your point earlier, if it was a themed meeting, like if parents wanted to know about CTE, it would just be a theme on that where we're more so presenting to them about that. So you can't mess that up. And then maybe take questions, you know, maybe have them email them, email us or what have you. But I, I do like that idea of doing something, at least, I don't know how many, maybe once, not too, too much, but where you're meeting with the, your, your district specifically. I also like what's been said so far about us coming together. But I think it's a lot that we need to talk through. I was going to say a couple of comments ago, just a consideration, since everybody's on Facebook, I don't know how we feel about going live at these town halls, even if we can't, you know, since we can't do it virtually. I don't know. This is just a thought. I'm not a Facebook person at all. But going live, people kind of tend to tune in more and they can comment and, you know, kind of maybe have somebody just monitoring Facebook while these town halls are going on. Just a thought, but just thought I throw that out there.
All right. Thank you. So Ms. Butler, did you have a question? Okay. And then we're going to, unless, nothing else, we're going to move on. And then, go ahead.
Yes. Well, I, well, I like the idea what Mr. Hancock said. And factually, my district had already been asking for that. And it was only going to be for, to come together for me to hear their concern and to bring it back to the board to hear and say, are y'all having those same concerns? So we, as a board collectively, could come together and say, do we need to do something about it? It was not more of me saying, oh, I'm going to do this because I know I cannot speak for the board. And they know that. So it was only to make sure that I'm there and listen to their, listen to their concerns, making sure I understand the concerns in the district and to bring it back to the board to make sure they understand it. So that's important to them. And when, when I ran, I knew that. And so I cannot act like now that I have won and I don't understand that. So I don't think that's fair to say now, we can't do that because I'm going to be honest, they the one who led to me. So I want to be able to go and sit there and talk to them and say, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying. And bring it back to the board and say, have y'all seen, you know, are y'all hearing these concerns? As I emailed you when I went to the BTA, I didn't say anything. I just emailed you and told you exactly what they were saying. And you knew the concerns. And that was it.
Yeah.
So something simple. No one is, you know, we're not saying what we're going to do because we do understand, everybody on this board understands that. We do not speak for the board. We cannot make suggestions. We cannot say anything that concerns what a position on the board, only the chair. We all understand that.
So, well, and a lot of these things, it's not even the chair because it's going to be things that, that are going to be new. And so the board doesn't have a position on them. And, and that, that's where it gets a little more tricky. So I, I want to stop the conversation here. And what we're going to do is put something together. And as you said, Ms. Warren, we got to work through the logistics and how to do this. And then we'll, you know, I'll send it out to everybody, I'll work with superintendent and, and Ms. Moore Lee. And, and we'll, we'll set up a framework about, about how we, how we can do it going forward. But we got to keep going because we got the meeting to get through.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Hancock said. So am I understanding that we are okay if we choose to in our districts to have these clarifying town halls, which would then be potentially separate from when we had an entire board-sponsored town hall?
So...
Or are we holding off on that decision?
I think we're, and there's Mr. Schwartz. So I, I think we got to hold off on that until, and that, that'll be part of what gets sent out for everybody to, to have a thumbs up or thumbs down on. I mean, honestly, there's always value in being someplace, but, but if you're just there to feel, to, to, to gather questions, that can be accomplished without being there and just having people submit questions. And then they could all be addressed when the board is together as a whole. But, but I get it because there's always values of, of listening to the discussion and seeing what's going on.
It's valuable in you being there. That's the biggest value, you being there.
No, I understand. And, and, and trying to find the time so that, so that we can accomplish that and then accomplish what we need to do as a board is, is where we need to, to figure that out. So we'll get something out in, in the next few days. Okay, next, we're going to go on to the Blueprint Implementation Plan.
Good evening, Chair Lucas, Vice Chair Moore Lee, board members, Dr. Navarro, staff, community stakeholders. My name is Chris Mahalan Miller, and I am the Charles County Blueprint Implementation Coordinator. With me tonight, I have all of our steering committee leads that I want to recognize for their leadership. I have Ms. Beth Sorsby, who is the Early Childhood Specialist and Lead for Pillar One. I have Ms. Nikki Majors, the Chief of Human Resources, who is our Lead for Pillar Two. We have Ms. Becky Pearson, the Director of CTE, and she is our Pillar Three Lead. We have Mr. Kevin Lowndes, who is our Chief of Teaching and Learning, who is our Pillar Four Lead. And Mr. Stephen Roberts, the Director of Accountability, and he is our Pillar Five Lead. I want to thank them for being here tonight. And they are here to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer for you. I wanted to let you know, this last Tuesday, the 21st, we held a town hall meeting focused on our blueprint. The theme of our blueprint town hall was to address three questions. Where are we going? Where are we now? And how do we get there? So we looked at the major goals of the object, of objectives by the blueprint. We looked at where we were at with our Phase One plan that is due March 15th. And we looked at what are some of the things that we need to do to get to where we want to be. The recording of the town hall can be found on the Blueprint website. I want to thank Shelley Mackey and her team for helping us with that. There's a survey as well that is linked to the website. And we're going to talk about that at the end of this presentation. But we want to encourage our stakeholder groups to watch that video so they can learn more about where we're at with our plan. That being said, just a reminder, this is a long marathon. This is a long distance project that we have going. We're going through 2032. The blueprint is still in, it's in draft. And we will turn our plan into MSD by March 15th, and it will remain a draft until it is approved. There is some feedback sessions that were going to be offered. We'll talk about that again at the end of the presentation. Our team's really focused on identifying and reflecting on our current practices. What is currently working in our school system? What do we need to continue? What do we need to improve? And what does that roadmap look, look like to get us through 2032? So Pillar One, you know, we were looking at, you know, this is early childhood education. We were looking at the leverage to, of our physical capital and human resources to expand our pre-K. Some of the questions that were addressed on how are we going to increase Tier One participation? How are we going to improve our outreach to the community? Expand our private provider participation? What does training for our educators look like when it comes to early childhood education? We talked about in previous sessions that kindergarten readiness assessment. How do we provide professional learning for our teachers so they are administering that KRA without bias? And how do we expand those duty centers? So as we're on this road to implementing the blueprint, as you know, we always hit these roadblocks and these detours, right? So in Pillar One, we as a system here in Charles County, two of our biggest roadblocks or our, our detours are really around spacing facilities and finding those private providers to participate in the early childhood pre-K program. And you know that we are thinking outside of the box as we try to address both of these detours that we've had. As you know, we're expanding pre-K to CSM for next school year. And we're also continuing our outreach to our private providers when it comes to this. So while it is a roadblock, it's more of a detour. So we're thinking outside of the box on how we're going to address this. For Pillar Two, we're looking at, reflecting and identifying how we increase teacher diversity and address the teacher shortage. How are we expanding our supports for National Board Certification? How do we increase teacher candidates here in Charles County? How do we leverage our funding from Maryland leads to help grow our own teachers here in Charles County? We've addressed that in our plan. What does our current hiring data look like? And what are we doing to really build this community of teachers within Charles County? So again, we have a detour. We know that there is a decrease in the teacher pipeline, not just here in Charles County, not just in Maryland, but everywhere in our nation right now, there is a real teacher shortage. But we are looking at how we work with institutes of higher education and how we partner with them to increase that pipeline here in Charles County. We're also looking at a roadblock when it comes to our National Board Certification process, the rigor and the diversity of our, the diversity of our candidates and the rigor of our program. As you know, National Board Certification gives our teachers a $10,000 increase in salary. This is not an easy process. This is not something that, that teachers can just go in and take an assessment and, and get this extra $10,000. So one of the things that we're doing is we're providing those supports to our teachers and we're creating cohorts within our school system to help our teachers get to that point. And once we, they get to that, we want to really increase their capacity for teacher leadership. We want them to help other teachers become nationally board certified as well and really use their expertise around that. With Pillar Three, we're looking at college and career readiness. Again, we're looking at improving math and reading program for all of our students. We're reflecting and identifying our current practices and how we can improve them. We're looking at how to keep students on track to become college and career ready. How do we create these support pathways for students that are not college and career ready? And then once students become college and career ready, what are we doing to support them past that point? So again, we have these detours. Some of the things that we are, some of the roadblocks that we're finding here is with our tutoring programs for our students, keeping our students that are on, keeping them on pace to become college and career ready. We know that tutoring supports best practice. We know that tutoring supports best practice is having tutors in person and during the school day. And, um, it's not just the teacher workforce shortage that is, um, hurting us. There are also, um, tutoring, um, uh, some shortages that we're finding to provide these in-person during-the-day supports for our students. So, we're having to really reflect on these practices and think outside of the box as to how we're going to address that. And then also with that detour is that funding for our college and career-ready pathways. That is a, a large expense, as you know. We have to provide, um, the, the money for the AP assessments, for the dual enrollment and early college, and also for those, um, CT students for their exams for that. Pillar Four, um, more students, uh, or more resources to ensure that our students are successful. So, again, as we reflect and identify how, uh, Charles County Public Schools, how will we identify students to have those more resources? How will we know who those students are? How will we provide students, um, supports, uh, in schools with high concentration of students living in poverty? Improving our education of special ed students and English learners, and enhancing student health services. So, again, as we look at this plan, um, we are looking at what effective instruction is for, um, for these targeted groups, and how we identify especially our special education students. What does our disciplinary, uh, data and practices look like? How do we reflect on our policies and procedures and our systems in place to mitigate discriminating, um, discipline practices for special ed? So, again, as always, we always have these detours. Uh, we talked about this at our last board meeting, this identi, the identification of students using just FARMs data and what there were, the other means that we could be using. Um, about two weeks ago, there was an article in the Washington Post, and it, it, um, talked about how, with using other means besides the, um, free and reduced meal, um, forms, that Maryland has found significantly more students that qualify for services, um, like free and reduced meals. And also, again, we, we do see a pattern across this. Our workforce shortage in areas that are related to, um, our school counseling and our, um, also with our special ed, uh, teachers as well. And then Pillar Five, um, we're talking about that oversight and the systems to review and to make sure that we're implementing our blueprint, and to really make sure that we're not just writing this goal or these goals just to turn something in. So, we have to be sure that we really are, um, I have to follow it word by word, but we're making those changes based on the data that we're collecting, and we're updating our plans that is reflective to what we're seeing in our schools. So, our biggest detour with that is waiting to see when these expert review teams will come to each individual school over the next several years. And also, one of, um, our biggest, I wouldn't, I don't want to use the word complaint, but some of our feedback that we have is we are continually turning in the same reports, um, to the state and to MSDE over and over again. Um, and this takes away from, um, our, our employees. It, it, um, it's just a, it's an observation, per se. Um, and this is feedback that we have shared with, um, MSDE and the AIB when it comes to the oversight of the blueprint.
A lot of, a lot of resources spent on process.
It is. I don't, yes. So, um, on, on Friday, this past Friday, February 24th, um, we had a one-on-one meeting. We participated in a one-on-one technical session, um, with our draft plan, with AIB and members of MSDE. We had a lot of positive comments, and they want us to highlight some of our practices at an upcoming meeting, especially some of the things that we're doing in early childhood with the expansion of pre-K when it comes to CSM, which is very exciting for us. So, kudos to Pillar One for that. Um, with that, they also gave us some questions that they'd like us to think about as we continue to, um, enhance our current, uh, uh, blueprint plan. So, by the March 14th, next board meeting, we plan to have a draft, and it will, and let me explain this. It will remain a draft plan until it is, um, approved by the AIB in July. So, on March 14th, when we, um, give the, when Dr. Navarro gives the thumbs up to share the plan, we're going to also put the plan on the website as well. And we went members of the public to have the opportunity to ask questions and to reach out to us, um, and to make suggestions to the plan as well. Um, and we have been told that tentatively, we should get feedback from the AIB and MSDE sometime between the end of April or the beginning of May. And from that time, they'll give us an opportunity to make revisions or make some changes to our plans if needed. And from that point, we will, um, fine-tune any questions that they have, and we will, uh, submit it for final approval to the AIB. One of the, um, feedback, and this is feedback apparently that every LEA is receiving, and I have taken complete ownership over this. The plan itself, with the template and the questions of 164 questions, was 100 pages long. And they told us we have an additional 99 pages to answer 164 questions. So, my advice to the team was, get in and get out, right? You do not have a lot of time. You don't have a lot of space to explain everything. Well, after we compiled everything together, we do have some space. And so MSDE and AIB has asked some clarifying questions to, it helped, um, explain some things a little further. So, again, I take complete ownership over that, because I panicked over only having 99 pages to answer 164 questions. Um, but after speaking with MSDE and my counterparts from all over the state, every single LEA, um, was asked for additional, uh, details with their questions. So, that is what I have, um, right now. Are there any additional questions?
Ms. Smith?
Uh, two points and then a question. So, uh, one, kudos to the Pillar One team for doing Charles County proud. Love that it's in early childhood education. Second point is, um, Dr. Navarro, I know that you convene kind of the heads of the PTOs. Wonder perhaps if in your meetings with them, notice, um, referencing the, um, upcoming opportunity to give feedback on the blueprint is something that they can share during their PTO, PTSO meetings, kind of back in their respective schools? Um, also, you, my question is about the Pillar Four for the farms. You mentioned the, um, article, but I'm not clear on whether Charles County will be looking at any other data points to ensure that we're not missing any students.
I don't have the answer to that question, and I don't. Um, I know that based on the map that was shown in the Washington Post article that there were significantly, uh, additional students in Charles County, um, in the southern Maryland region that, um, were qualified to receive, um, additional services because of that. But as far as what our county policy will be moving forward, um, that is not a question that I can answer.
If I can chime in, so what's, what is required in the blueprint law is actually to take a look at a more comprehensive way of looking at po, at poverty in general, the degrees of poverty. Uh, one of the things that, one of the bills, and, um, Eric is somewhere hiding, but perhaps, uh, at the next board, uh, meeting, he can go through this bill. But I, I think he actually mentioned it at the last bill, just very, very quickly. The bill that was introduced, it had a high sticker price to it, uh, but really took, instead of a binary position of farms, either yes or no, uh, it actually expanded to sort of five levels of poverty indicators, right? And it looked at multiple things, including homeownership, uh, education of, of parents. And so, it really did, uh, really a census view. And if you recall, when we had the, um, State Department, the State Board of Education visiting us, one of the maps that they showed us was the different color coatings. And we had sections, um, where we know intuitively, because we know the communities, where we just have, uh, varying depthness of degrees of, of, of need. And I think this is what sort of moved forward. So, I think it is, um, it is a much more comprehensive and diminutive, um, way of looking at, um, at the extents of poverty, if you will, and the impacts for children. Um, I'm not sure how far any legislation will move at the state level for us to transition to looking at that at a statewide view. Uh, but it is extremely informative for us, because we have the maps and, and, and the, and it very much aligns with some of the things that we know about our communities just being very, very different. So, one of the examples, we had a meeting with the superintendents. One of the examples, um, when you take a look at that, is two schools that right now could be showing the same farms, uh, percentage and receiving the same funding. But when you disaggregate the data and you look at those other indicators, like homeownership, like parents' educational level and so forth, you really do see the difference, um, in terms of concentrations of poverty, um, and, uh, in certain areas. And I think it's, it's a much more in-depth way of looking at it, and it's also a way to differentiate the way we, we, um, currently do funding.
Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Ms. Miller, again, for being here and for your presentation. Um, I just wanted to first say that I had the opportunity to attend the Pillar Three Committee Meeting last week, and just kudos to Ms. Pearson, because there was a lot of great dialogue around, um, CCR, College and Career Readiness, and how we're going to get there, and just a lot of great ideas shared. So, that was my first committee meeting, and I'm super excited to see where we go from there. It's a great group, and, like I said, a lot of great ideas and, and things shared there. So, appreciate that, Ms. Pearson. Um, just a quick question about the town hall last week. Can you tell me how well that was attended? Do you have any idea as to how many attendees that we had?
Um, we didn't have as many attendees as we had hoped. It was under 20. However, we are, um, based on our last principals' meeting, um, we do have some schools coming up, and I know, Ms. Kramer, you had reached out as well.
Yeah, I was going to mention that for you.
Thank you. Um, we do have some schools where, um, principals have asked that their staff, uh, for a staff meeting that I come out and share information regarding the blueprint. Um, we also have some PTO groups that have expressed interest as well, um, to learn more about the blueprint. And so, what we're hoping is that through this, we'll have more participation when it comes to the surveys.
Okay, yeah, great, and thank you. I was going to mention that, that thank you for agreeing to attend. Ms. Miller had agreed to attend the PTO meeting at Berry, um, where my son attends, and she was, uh, very, very quickly accepted the invitation. So, we're excited to have her, um, in April. So, thank you for that. Um, just another quick question, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but when you talk about a Pillar Two with the cohorts, the teacher cohorts, and the teachers essentially experience teachers mentoring the newer teachers, is there any incentive, um, built in to this pillar into the blueprint to kind of incentivize those experienced and veteran teachers, you know, to want to do that? Obviously, you know, that's their profession of choice, and we all know teachers do what they love. But an incentive would be nice, particularly because obviously, at the climate that we're in, there are probably the highest rate of burnt-out teachers. Um, so can you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure, and I can ask Mr. Lowndes to come over too. Through the Maryland Leads Grant, we are, uh, able to provide stipends for teachers who are, um, uh, providing teacher mentoring. And also, I know that Dr. Navarro had talked earlier about, um, different fed, federal grants. Um, and through Title II funds, we're able to also provide stipends for teachers who are, um, providing professional learning for other teachers. Um, specifically with National Board Certification, um, our National Board Certification Coordinator, Latisha Burks, who is also nationally board-certified herself, so she really has, um, she's been through the experience, she knows what to expect, um, and she's also, um, um, understands what professional learning should look like as well. So, she's done a really good job to target our current professional, our current nationally board-certified teachers to help, to help them develop into teacher leaders as well. So, um, one of the things that will happen with future negotiations is this idea of the career ladder. And once teachers become nationally board-certified, they have the ability to move up on that career ladder. And, um, a lot of that, uh, moving up is really about teacher leadership, right? Because teachers have the credibility that none of us have, because they are doing it every single day. And so, the, the blueprint, um, is very purposeful in that way, that, um, teachers have this ability to, um, um, to move up and not leave the classroom. So, you have teachers, um, that are seeking compensation, and sometimes they choose to become an administrator, not because they want to leave the classroom, but because it may make more money. So, what we want, the blueprint's intention is to keep the teachers in the classroom, but give them this leverage to be, become leaders at their craft, and to incentivize that leadership from within. And so, what's been really nice is, um, with Maryland Leads Grant, we're able to, it's not this standalone grant where we're getting this pot of money. We're all working to this goal. And so, um, under, uh, Mr. Lowndes' leadership and his team, they've done a really good job to make sure that the grant is aimed at, um, uh, the same goals within the blueprint, which if you look at the, uh, Dr. Navarro's strategic plan, that it's all within alignment of each other.
That's correct.
What she said, right?
Earlier today, when you said, where is the professional development in the budget? Well, it's all linked together. And, uh, you know, we have it in certain line items, but we also have it in all our grants, and we also have it when we're rolling out curriculum. So, just like, uh, I think if you look at all the pillars, they're interconnected. And you'll see the teacher lead positions needed in Pillar Four when we're talking about, uh, special education, and how are we going to help grow our own and within the special education area? And it's all linked to the, uh, teacher leads that's in Pillar Two, um, and how we're doing teacher, uh, leaders, um, in the career ladder. And I think that's kind of, that's part of the discussions that we have when we, when we meet as the leads of the, uh, blueprint, as to how do we make it cohesive so that people see that, yes, I'm working on Pillar Four, but I can't be a silo. I also have to know about the work that's going on in all the other pillars, because it's all interrelated to one another.
Thank you for that, because we often get, um, I often talk to, you know, experienced teachers and veteran teachers, and we actually met with one this weekend, some of my colleagues and I. And I think the, um, general consensus amongst a lot of them is that they're being forgotten in this, and that there's going to be a lot of increases for new teachers, and they're going to get a huge step up in things, you know, in the blueprint, but maybe not so much for those who have been teaching for a long time. So, it's nice to hear that, and I think, you know, the more that you meet at the schools and talk to the teachers, and they can, you know, kind of become educated more about what's available for them as the veteran teachers, I think that's really important. So, thank you for sharing that.
I think the needs of the veteran teachers are becoming more apparent now as you see more veteran teachers retiring and more new people coming in without any education background. We really are looking at how do we leverage our veteran teachers to support our new folks in our buildings.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Duncan, do you want to say something?
Sure, I just, um, I'm going back to the farms question, sorry, I wasn't fast enough. Um, just to add on that Washington, uh, Post article, there was a change in the certification process. So, um, if, it's called direct certification, so they did not have to fill out an application if they were receiving other, um, aids such as Medicaid. So, that is part of why you're seeing an increase in those numbers as well.
I, I was going to ask about that, that, that there's no, there's other, are there other reciprocity-type agreements? I mean, Medicare, Medicaid would be one of them, but...
But other, yes, exactly. So, if they're receiving, um, federal assistance in, in other ways, then they're automatically, um, now approved for FARMs, and that didn't exist. and that didn't exist before. So that has improved the process, for sure.
Very good. All right, anything else? Awesome. Thanks, great job, as usual.
Thanks.
Next, Dr. Gill and Ms. Mackey.
Good evening. Chairperson Lucas, Vice Chairperson Marley, board members, Dr. Navarro, student board member of Bojima staff. Dr. Gill and I are here tonight to present to you an overview of the calendar planning process. Dr. Gill is the lead from the Office of School Administration and Leadership on the Calendar Planning Committee. The Office of Communications really manages the information collection, collection process. We produce the most sought-after document in the school system, which is the Parent-Himbut Calendar.
Yeah.
It's something that I think we all look at daily. It's a very big task. But our presentation tonight is to explain to you the work that goes into that, that final document. So to share with you some historical data on the calendar. State law outlines that students must attend 180 days per school year. Each local Board of Education can determine the start and end dates for each school year. Currently, our certificated staff agreement with the EACC outlines 190 contracted workdays, 10 early dismissal teacher planning, early dismissal days for report card prep as well. The AFSMI contract, which covers our support staff, features 11 holidays. And state law also outlines the following public school holidays. There's a list. But there are, it's important to note that there are financial implications with these contracted workdays. If we add an additional day to that teacher contract, the 191, there would be a cost to CCPS, same as if we were to add a holiday for our support staff with the AFSMI agreement. The school system follows most federal holidays. State law does require, if we are open for certain holidays, such as Washington's birthday, Veterans Day is one, that we have to do some kind of observation activities among students and schools if we do choose to be open on similar days.
So we do have a process for developing the calendar. We don't just develop it ourselves. So we create a committee, we have created a committee, for the 24-25 school year calendar. As you know, next year's calendar is already developed and already approved by the board. So we're working on the 24-25 school year calendar. We try to have a variety of stakeholders to represent their, their interests. We have EACC members, we have AFSMI members, parents, students, instructional staff, support staff. We're very interested in finding out what people want and then see what we can do to make that happen. And that process includes that we develop at least two draft calendars, perhaps more. That gets reviewed by the senior leadership team, the superintendent, and then those drafts are shared with you, the elected board, for review. The process for reviewing that is a three-step meeting process, just like you passing other kinds of policies. The first time that it comes to you, it would be an information item. For example, we could bring that at a board meeting, for example, in March. That's presented to you, an opportunity to ask questions, give feedback, tell us to rethink some things, give us some direction about where you would like for us to go. We continue those meetings, and we bring back whatever, either the same information or some revised information to you at the next board meeting, so meeting number two. Again, we answer any questions, give an opportunity for the public to provide input because once it came to the first meeting, it's a public document. And then it would finally come back to you at least a third time for you to take action.
So I also want to point out here that we are typically, prior to COVID, the board would approve the school calendar two years in advance for planning purposes. But starting with the pandemic, you know, we closed schools in March of 2020. So the calendar process was shifted a little bit to where we're now in the process where we're developing that calendar just a year in advance. So that's something to consider, too, for the calendar planning process. So this is just to give you some background information on the process that we followed for the 23-24 school calendar. The Calendar Committee met. We developed two proposals. Those proposals were presented to the senior leadership team, superintendent for review and feedback. Those proposals were presented to the elected board in October of 2022. A calendar survey was done. We surveyed staff, parents, and put the information out for the community and students as well. We got a total of about 1,400 responses. There's a breakdown here. The survey was shared through multiple accounts. And this is just a brief review of some of the questions that we asked. And we were looking really for this initial question for general knowledge. Does our community, do our stakeholders understand that students have to go to school for 180 days per school year? 93, yes, 7% no. Which calendar option do you prefer? Option one was the traditional calendar model that we are following this year, which is four inclement weather days are built into the end of June. Option two, those inclement weather days were built in as days off during the spring months to try to maximize instruction. Question three was really to gauge the community's interest in when we wanted to start that school year. Was the interest to start it before Labor Day or after Labor Day? Question four, trying to determine if parents are utilizing that parent conference day that is built in in October. Question number five, I'm always going to throw in a communication-related question for a survey that I take part in. And I was really interested from, knowing from the community, if we are sharing any kind of calendar changes in advance with our stakeholders. And that also tied into that second calendar option because our weather days were built in in the spring months. If we did not need to use those days, then we would go ahead and keep them as a, we would actually use them as a closure day. So trying to determine that timeframe to let our community know when we were going to use that day. So gauging whether or not our community thinks we share that kind of information with enough time notification was important as well.
So as part of the survey process, respondents had the opportunity to give some suggestions and give their feedback. I'm not going to read the bulleted list, but we had participants that thought that we should start school earlier in August. We had participants that thought we should start after Labor Day. So the slide that Shelley just shared, it was about 50-50. Start before Labor Day, start after Labor Day. So we had respondents who said we should have a longer spring break. We should have a longer winter break. We should have a longer Thanksgiving break. So we should have a lot of days off of school. We had respondents who thought that we should build in more religious holidays. That's one of the things that I know the student member of the board brought forward, and staff did as well. We had respondents who, then on the other hand, said remove Fair Day. We should go to school on Fair Day and not, not have that day off as a school closure. We had respondents who said we should have year-round school. And just like Shelley talked about, if we have more workdays for our 10- and 11-month employees, we will have to pay more. That's a funding issue, as well as a negotiation contract issue because that's not in people's negotiated contracts. We had feedback that said some things that are more board functions. For instance, we had people who said we should not use, Shelley talked about that we have to go to school 180 days. We also have to be in school 1,080 hours. It's not an or, it's an and. So 180 days, but you can't go an hour a day. It has to be 180 days and 100, 1,080 hours. So we had some feedback that said we should petition the state to just go by hours, which is, I believe, what Virginia does. So when we have all those snow days, they are not so worried about how many days the children have gone to school because they meet the hour requirement. And my understanding is that...
And there's a proposed bill, yes.
My understanding is that the Anarundel County legislation has proposed that, that type of a bill. Another feedback that was very popular was, take a look at virtual instruction and what can we do as far as asking for a waiver to have some virtual instruction on Sundays? So for example, if it was a snowy winter, if we had some snow days, could we apply to use a virtual instruction on that, on those days so that it would count as one of those 180 days? That would be something that the board would need to take action on as far as an option.
So in talking about some of these ideas from feedback that we got from the survey, here's some alternate options for school calendars. Dr. Gill talked about the addition of asynchronous days. Some school systems do have students complete assignments at home. That day could be used as a teacher-staff development day, where teachers are on-site. Adding an additional contracted professional development day, I believe that the Office of Teaching and Learning has an interest in adding not additional two-hour early dismissal days for teacher planning, professional development, but implementing an additional day to that teacher contract to take it to the 191. And you'll see, we added a cost estimate here that Ms. Acton helped us gather to cover about 2,600 employees. That cost to the system would be about $346,000. So again, there's that...
A day.
Per day, correct, per day. So there's that financial implication that comes around with that, that comes back to that piece. Other Maryland school systems are using the state-approved virtual instruction days for inclement weather. This would be a board request of the Maryland State Department of Education. You know, with the instructional days from home, there's the possibility of accessibility and technology issues for families. But I did a little bit of research. I believe Anarundel County, Baltimore County, Prince George's County, currently in their 22-23 calendar model, have incorporated the use of virtual days. Districts can also build in a physical makeup date, such as we have in our calendar. We do have the four inclement weather days. But if we were to go past that, rather than adding on to the end of the school year, we could utilize those days virtually. Other ideas, other districts, some places extend hours in the school day. Again, if we were on that hour-day model, to where students go to school Monday through Thursday, and then Friday's a shortened day. That afternoon is professional development, maybe for teachers, but also student interventions and enrichment programs are coordinated for those Friday afternoons. So these are just different examples of other ways to look at our calendar. I don't think I missed anything?
No.
No? Okay. And this is our framework for the 24-25 calendar. The Calendar Committee is set to start its meetings next week to begin its work on developing draft options for the 2024-2025 school year. Our meeting dates are every other week?
Yes.
Starting March through May. And the goal of the Calendar Committee is to develop draft calendars at the March meetings with the possibility of presenting to senior leadership and the superintendent at some point in March heading into April. And the goal for the Calendar Committee is to bring our drafts to you at the April 2023 meeting. So our last slide says questions because we assume there will be questions, right? But also input. Part of the work for the Calendar Committee is talking about the interest that the board has for the development of that model for 24-25.
So we're very receptive to whatever input you might have as far as functions that you would like the calendar to serve, something for the Calendar Committee to work with.
Sure. And could you just, before we start entertaining questions, people may say, well, why does a calendar have to be approved a year in advance? And so I, I know some of the reasons, obviously, there's a lot of things that you have to plan around. But could you speak to that a little bit?
So I, I think that our community is a, is a planning community. From a parent perspective, I got an email today at 4:00 from a parent who asked me if I knew when Laplata's homecoming was. We are already getting inquiries from the community in regards to graduation ceremonies for 2024 because families are trying to plan. But I also think that our staff have a set model that they know their contract date's going to start on August the 15th. If I'm a 10-month teacher, and I will be, you know, without inclement weather, snow days, my contract may end the second week in June, maybe the middle of June. But it also helps us plan for summer programs. When we have an idea of when that end date will be, we can take a look at that calendar and determine when those summer plans, summer school, would start in July. You know, some of that timeframe has to shift a little bit, depending on how far into June we go. But also in August, you know, we really start working on our back-to-school efforts for the coming school year. Professional development is in. You've got the end of summer school at the end of July. And I think it just gives our community a model, all of our stakeholders, staff, and parents, and students as well, kind of an expectation of when the school year's going to ramp up again. But it also gives ample time, I think, for planning.
All right, great, thank you. Ms. Butler-Washington?
Thank you for that explanation. You do pretty much the same, same thing as the Pentagon do. We do it five years out, planning out. So I like the, the virtual part of it because we could use those days since we already have been pushed into virtual. The students know how to use the, the computers. The parents know how to use them. The teachers know how to use them. And how the workforce know how to do it is when we know something's coming down, OPM sends an email, you get the alert, bring your laptop home, and you begin the day, no different from the students. They go home, they take their laptops, they know to start, to get up at that particular time. The teachers know how to do it the same way, and you could save on that time. So therefore, you could utilize the days, and you don't have to subtract and add from it. So they could be a part of it. So I think that would be a great idea to be able to do that.
Okay, Ms., Dr. Gill?
So currently in Maryland, the super, the state superintendent of schools would approve any use of virtual days. So that would be something that the elected board would apply for and get permission to. So there are kind of two ways to think about it. I think one is that emergency use, right? We wake up in the morning, or we know it's going to snow tomorrow. So we wake up in the morning and we say, okay, everybody's on code virtual. Another way to think about it would be, we're going to plan ahead that thus-and-such a date, four months from now, is going to be a virtual day so that everybody has that opportunity to take that computer home. And if I don't have a computer that works, or I don't have internet at my house, so I can't log on, then my teachers have that opportunity to download the work onto the computer and/or provide me paper pencil activities so that it can be done like that. So that's kind of the two ways to think about virtual. But that would be, I think, a board discussion.
Yes. And then the next thing was to, you said add-on days. You said it was a price to it or something?
Yeah. So right now, we...
I'm working for free.
Our teachers are contracted to work 190 days in a year. So if we say to a teacher, we're going to go to school more days, or we want to have more days that you do professional learning, we're going to train you on a new reading program, so we need you to, to stay more days in the summertime, or come during spring break, or come during winter break, then we would have to rewrite that contract or amend it and say, now, teachers, we need you to work 191 days, or 192 days, or 193 days. And for each day that we add on, we have to pay more money because they're coming to work because they get paid.
So if you subtract one, so you don't have to do that, right? So if you, if you add on a holiday, they don't have to come to school? Everybody stay at home?
Right. But if we subtract a student day, then somehow we have to make up that student day somewhere. The children still have to come to school 180 days.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Smith, Ms. Kramer, and then Ms. Marley.
Well, one, thank you for the presentation. And thank you for adding in that we do still have students in the county that do not have access to Wi-Fi, not only, especially in District Two. And I know the parts of District Two that butt up against District One as well. So in terms of, my question was just around the Calendar Committee. Can you share, like, do we have members of the community? Do we have parents or students? Like, what's the composition? I feel like it was in the slide deck, perhaps I must have skipped over.
Yeah, we probably went through it fast, too. So we have staff here. We have staff from our financial group. Yeah, we probably went through it fast, too. So we have staff here. We have staff from our financial group, from payroll, from budget and finance, from teaching and learning.
Accountability for the testing schedule.
We do have parents. We have three high school parents that have volunteered to participate, as well as three high school students. We have our union leaders who are part of that Calendar Committee so that they can come and provide their feedback. Am I missing anyone? Human resources.
Good?
Thank you.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson. Thank you all for giving this presentation. It's very helpful to understand, and I think for the public, too, all the work that goes into planning the calendar. So I have a question about the committee. So are the the survey issues that were raised, is that information provided to the committee for consideration in development of the calendar?
Yes, it will.
Yes, okay. And is, I know that in one of the previous presentations that you gave, there was information about kind of the the percentage of responses and kind of what ranked, you know, where in terms of the the other asks that the community had listed on the survey. Is that information provided as well as to, you know, the the most common suggestions so that they can look at that from a hierarchy perspective?
Yeah, what's included in the presentation is just a very general overview of percentages. But the actual system that we use to survey, it's called Qualtrics. It's what we use for all of our surveys. It's like a 38-page report that I think I exported that has all of the open-ended responses and feedbacks. And what I did when I pulled that data together is I went through and I looked for common themes. But that is data that we're planning on sharing with the committee so that they can take a look at it and kind of see what tones and what key messages and key feedback areas that they're seeing that are outside of us who have worked on the the survey itself.
Right, okay, great. And then just a couple of comments I wanted to make since you asked for input. Veterans Day would probably be at the top of my list, one of the things at the top of my list, because I know that we do have staff and teachers who are veterans, and I just think it would be sort of an easy win, so to speak, to give them that day, not as a working day, not just as a day off of school, but a teacher day off as well, a staff day off, you know, and a teacher day off.
I could jump in quick. I think in the past, that has been the case. It was not this year because of, where's Mr. Schwartz?
Election Day.
The election, yeah. So, yeah, just for the public, we're normally off, but because of of the election.
In my experience in Charles County Public Schools, it has been back and forth.
Yeah.
And I think, just, I guess, for clarity, on Tuesday of that week of this year was Election Day where the children didn't come to school. And then on Friday was Veterans Day, the holiday. So to be off two kind of separated days in the same week, I think the Calendar Committee, you know, for this year's calendar, decided to come to school on Veterans Day, so it wasn't, go to school, stay home, go to school, go to school, stay home. But yes, we've been back and forth over the years.
For the current model for next year, 23-24, that's already been approved. It's a closure day for kids, but it's a professional development day for staff. But I understand the point. I've heard that feedback. You know, when those calls come in, they come to our office.
Right.
So I did answer some staff inquiries this fall, as well as several calls from parents.
Another item in terms of prioritization in my mind would be religious holidays, additional religious holidays to be more inclusive of our community. I know that's something that Ms. Abujima has brought up, and I think some of my other colleagues share the same sentiment. I definitely think, you know, perhaps additional surveying to determine maybe what some of the major holidays are that folks would like to have observed, both from a staff perspective and a community perspective. But, you know, that's something that I think, you know, would really be important to do as our community changes and as we evolve here in Charles County, to be more inclusive of everyone in the community.
Mike, you want to come up, Mr. Schwartz, and just so so everyone understands the the law and on that?
Good evening. Just very briefly, we're not allowed to close schools for religious holidays. We can only close schools for educationally-related reasons. So if we were to close on any religious holiday, it'd have to be because, for example, we had a large number of students who were absent because of that holiday, or a large number of teachers. So that's why we're closed on holidays such as Christmas, for example. Nobody would come to school if we were open on Christmas.
Right.
But other religious holidays, we have to be very careful about about that.
Interesting. Thank you.
And then to Mr. Schwartz's point, though, what has been done is that there is recognition of those holidays in the calendar. Again, to, you know, to be sensitive and understanding to to as many people as possible in the community. But just so, I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Schwartz. A follow-up question to that, do you know, or does anyone currently know the percentage of staff who may observe other religious holidays that we are not currently off school for?
We don't ask our staff for their religious preferences, but we do look at attendance rates and absentee rates for
Right, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
And we haven't, as far as I know, seen any particular holiday, religious holidays that have a slight
Increase or, okay, okay. That was, I know you can't ask what their religious preferences are, just wondering if you notice any trends on particular days that maybe there was an uptick in teacher absences and things like that. Okay, okay, thank you for that. And my last two things, I'm in favor of a swap for Fair Day. I'm with those folks. I know it's a Charles County tradition, and, you know, some folks may not agree with me, but I'm definitely in favor of swapping another day for Fair Day, if that, if it comes down to it, you know, like how we did for Veterans Day. I definitely would be in favor of swapping out something like Fair Day as opposed to a Veterans Day. I know those are in the two different months, but just giving that as an example. And again, with the virtual instruction days, like Ms. Smith mentioned, you know, it's really important to remember that we do not have equity across the county, even to, even, you know, to this day with our experience with virtual. So if we did do that, it would definitely, I think, have to be a planned day so that there could be alternative instruction provided for those students who would not be able to access the internet because we do still have, you know, households that do not have access to reliable internet. So from an equity standpoint, it would have to be planned. That would be the only way that we could do it. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. This was very informative and comprehensive. I definitely have to echo the concerns about the equity the equity around the virtual days. I know right here in D4, which people are surprised, this is technically District Four, we have large areas of concentrated poverty. And so while people may, in theory, have more access, that may not be practical. And with that said, I'm still, and will die on this hill, in favor of expanding our virtual options as much as we can because I know on the flip side of that, there are people that, for their health reasons, or whose children may have thrived while they were home for their own mental health, would want that option. And I think, I know for some teachers, they left because they had to come back in person. And some people are still, for whatever reason, not comfortable with being in the building. So just, you know, my two cents on that, to the extent possible where we could offer that. I also want us to consider that we had mentioned the possibility of changing the day that the board would meet, and I believe this would be the time to consider that, primarily because we are always going to conflict with the county commissioner meetings. And I know from speaking with Dr. Navarro, this is something that needs to be planned far enough in advance to give staff opportunities to adjust. So I personally would like to consider a Thursday, as it seemed from the previous meeting that the issue wasn't necessarily the timing, it was just the day is always going to conflict with the county commissioners. So that would be my input for, you know, the board to consider as a whole. And I echo, highly, highly echo, always in favor of veterans having the day off. Married to a Marine Corps veteran is near and dear to my heart, and I'd like those teachers that are themselves veterans or may be married to veterans for them to be able to honor that day as well. And similar to what Ms. Kramer said, very much in favor of proposing a swap for Fair Day. So, thank you all again.
Ms. Abujima?
Okay, so first, I have a question regarding the asynchronous days. I'm curious, is it just teachers assigning work to students and then students doing it on their own time? Or would it be much like online school where students, or where teachers are on Zoom teaching students? How are we envisioning this?
The districts that we looked at for that particular slide, for that research, were implementing a day where it was students doing work at home.
Asynchronously?
Yeah. So it wasn't live instruction from home. It was, I'm a teacher, I have professional development day where I'm in the building, learning about a certain content area, right? Or maybe I'm spending the afternoon grading papers because it's a report card prep afternoon built into the day. But students would be doing assignments, much similar to how we operated during COVID, when that Wednesday was the asynchronous day here in the county.
So those days would still count towards the 180-day requirement, correct?
I think that we would have to petition or request that of the state. I don't know if that opportunity is available through MSDE at this point. I think that the waiver that they do have for districts to request virtual days of instruction, I believe it goes up to eight. I think it's eight days.
I'd say with asynchronous days, I'm like thinking about the religious holidays and what Mr. Schwartz said, and how, like, you can't close schools if there's not a large number of students missing school. So I feel like on those religious holidays would be a good time to do the asynchronous days because then students would be, won't be missing as much if they need to miss school on those days. So something just to look into.
Yeah, Ms. Bella Washington?
Did we decide on to change today for the board meeting?
We haven't decided on anything. No. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both for the presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Just a couple of input things, and then I do have a question. As it's been said before, the Veterans Day, I think even during an election year, we have to, you know, if it weren't for our veterans, nothing matters. And I actually felt kind of embarrassed this year. I know St. Mary's County closed for Veterans Day and for Election Day, and just a couple of weeks ago, we had a Monday and a Friday off. So it's, it's, it's not anything that's extremely rare, I think, in the future. And this is a calendar that I voted on, so, I mean, it's, I'm as guilty as anyone. So I just didn't know that at the time, and that's my own fault. But I do think in the future, regardless, I think it should be, it's a federal holiday. It should be a holiday for students and employees, in my, in my opinion. And I have heard that feedback from members of our community. Another thing I hear a lot, for whatever reason, everyone seems to really like what our surrounding counties do with the calendar. And if there is a way to collaborate, and I know that it's on here, to collaborate with our surrounding counties to structure a calendar that's similar to theirs. I'll use an example. I have a friend that is a teacher at Lackey but lives in St. Mary's County. And I know that the spring breaks and winter breaks specifically, there's a few days where they're not off at the same time. And that's just one example of, I'm sure there's more. If we could try to find a way, I know with having professional development days and all that added into the calendar, those things, it's hard to do, to do both, but it's just a recommendation. I have the unpopular opinion of I'm extremely in favor of Fair Day remaining Fair Day. There are a lot of kids that put a lot of projects in at the fair, and if you have the chance to go to the fair on Friday, you'll see a lot of kids there. I know the 4H program is something I'm passionate about. The livestock show is always on Friday. And most all the awards and the judging is done on Fridays as well at the fair, not just with livestock, with all projects that are submitted. And I have one other concern and then a question. My other concern, again, it's been spoke upon about concerns with virtual, using virtual days. And or, and it's even, we have to think about the equity that's involved, even if it's a planned-out virtual day. If we have students that have reliable internet access and they can be one-on-one with the teacher, and some students are still at home with, doing pen and paperwork, that's still, that's still not equitable to me. The students doing the work are not getting the same education that the students with the good internet are. And as Ms. Smith mentioned in her district, and as well in my district, in the whole county, it doesn't matter which district you're in. But primarily our two districts, there's a lot of areas that that the internet's not very reliable. So it's just something to think about. I'm not saying that, you know, there's probably a way to make that work, but it's just something to think about. I do have one question. Ms. Mackey, I think, had mentioned, and it's on here, about the extended hours, Monday through Thursday, and a half day on Friday. I think, did you say that there are jurisdictions in the state doing that currently?
Not in Maryland, no.
Not in Maryland, okay.
Yeah. I think we pulled some data from the West Coast, as well as one of the models on here, I think, the asynchronous day that was built into the calendar for students and teacher professional development day was a district in Delaware.
Okay. I would be curious to see some data on that. I know I have a lot of friends that work for the federal government, and they work long days for, they're usually off on a Friday or a Monday, and they, they love it. So that's, yeah, yeah, four tens and a three-day weekend. So, I mean, I don't, I can't say I'd be in favor or opposed to it, but I would personally be curious to some data on it. And thank you for your time.
Ms. Smith?
Just briefly, because I already raised my point. I don't want to speak for Ms. Thomas, but I think you would have support from the District Two contingent on keeping Fair Day Fair Day. All right, there we go.
I won't say anything else because it's pretty much already been said. What I will say is that I think you're going to have to have more than than two options. And don't take anything that you heard as something that the board as a whole would like to see.
And typically, when we develop the draft options, part of that draft, those drafts are not the board-deeming days. Those are generally plugged into the calendar after it's approved.
And I think we have a little time on that to flush out what's, what's best, if anything. But yeah, for planning purposes, I understand.
But I think the board kind of picked up on the biggest challenge, is that if we have a reasonable beginning-of-the-year start date and a reasonable, in some people's minds, end-of-the-year end date, and then we have a lot of days off in between, it becomes hard to fit 180 days in. The 1,080 hours, we usually don't have a problem with. It's the 180 days that we
And I do have a question. Is it ultimately the board's, and only the board's decision, despite what the committee may say, whatever, whoever's part of that committee, to decide what day school starts and what day school ends?
Yeah, I think through, that's state law, that the board has the control over determining the start and end dates.
And that could be any start and end date in any 12-month period?
Unless there's a governor rule.
Yeah, never had that before, but yeah.
Sorry, but I thought I would just remind us. But other than that, it is, it is the board's
Okay. Well, I would, you know, I'm going around the edges here, but, you know, there are some people that are in favor of going to school the entire year and having breaks in the entire year. And that's something that the board, even absent, not that I would certainly not talk to.
That was in the calendar survey feedback. I did see that.
Yeah.
But I think, as Mr. Hancock brought up, St. Mary's County, I think their teachers go back in the middle of August. So they're getting out much sooner in June.
I'm going to look over to Mr. Heim because I know it's early. King George?
It's an early start, usually by the 15th of August, and they're usually out around Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so food for thought.
And that early start helps them have longer winter breaks, right? So usually their winter break is a little bit longer. You're talking about the aligning the days
Yeah.
to our fellow counties. They do have longer winter breaks and sometimes spring breaks, simply, and sometimes Thanksgiving breaks simply because they go back earlier and
Because I believe they're building in just as many professional development days as we are here in Charles County. But it's contingent upon that start date.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Has there been, or has the EACC, the teachers in general, have they provided any feedback around what they would like to see in terms of the start or the end? I know they're on the committee, but do they have, in other words, is there a diversion, so to speak, between what parents may be looking at and what teachers may be looking at?
between what parents may be looking at and what teachers may be looking at? Have you noticed any?
No, no.
Just curious if they had any thoughts about the start times.
I think our teachers who live in Virginia and their children are going back earlier, they would probably love to, just like our, they would probably love to start earlier and be out earlier, just like our teachers who live in St. Mary's would like to align to St. Mary's schedule, and that's something that we're looking at. But I think our teachers are parents, too, and they have the same interests generally as parents. And the biggest, I think, desire from them is let them know their schedule early so that they can make plans.
All right, good conversation. Have fun with that.
We'll be back.
I'm glad Dr. Gill took lots of notes.
All right. We have a couple of action items to go through. We heard the news from Ms. Acton earlier. So now the chair will look for a motion to approve the revised changes to the FY 2024 budget. Is that a so moved?
That is a so moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Moore Lee.
Second.
And second by Mr. Hancock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous for all those who can vote, thank you. And next is the approval of the elementary school number 23 contract that we heard earlier from Mr. Heim. Chair will seek a motion to approve. Moved by Ms. Thomas, second by Ms. Kramer. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, all right. On my agenda, it says adjournment, so that means I'd look for a motion.
Second.
Please, second by Ms. Butler-Washington. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. Drive safely, enjoy the rest of your week.